We are back in the open session and it's nice and a little bit different. We'll start with a tax rate hearing. So if there is any member of the public who wants to address the board with respect to tax rate, now is the time. If you want to step up to the podium. See anyone who closed the tax rate hearing? And we will now begin to do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
So we'll trip over to Dallas' act room for honoring him.
Good evening, everyone. Wanted just to begin, it was great to start the school year last week, getting out in buildings, just a blast to feel the excitement and I think we're off to a great start. As you can see next to us, we have a large group and a critical group for us to get off to such a smooth start. As you well know, many construction projects over the summer, many of those coming right down to the wire. And the stories I've heard personally, being in particular at Franklin Elementary in the days leading up, I had never been sought out so much in those days by staff in that building to say, be sure to pass along what an incredible job our crew did to pull this off. Not only to have it ready for back-to-school night on Monday, but then when we open the doors on Wednesday. So, talked to Mr. Anderson in the days following and I think he had talked to Steve Aldrich and we wanted to make it happen tonight to thank and recognize groups that represent not only custodial, maintenance, fields and grounds. Am I leaving anyone else out? The warehouse crew and we have Jason Bright here as well. And I talked to Steve Aldrich a little bit earlier today and, you know, he said, you know, the efforts were incredible, but he was just blown away by that can-do attitude. And he said, and I quote, "They accomplished their goal." And again, hats off to this crew with us this evening. So what we thought we would do is we have, I think, four certificates representing different departments and we are going to have those leaders come up, take these and then get them deployed in their respective departments here this week. I have one for the LPS Maintenance Department. Who would like to come up? Steve Aldrich himself.
There you are, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. We have LPS Custodial. That would be Greg Green, Frank Messivich.
Gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Frank.
LPS Warehouse Department, that would be Mr. Jason Bright.
Sir.
And finally, OPS Grounds Department. Would you like to come up?
Mr. Breland.
Absolutely.
Good job.
Good job. I think before I turn it loose here, I thought, if it's okay, could I get a quick photo here of the full group?
Awesome.
Let's give this crew a big round of applause. And finally, before I turn it back to Mr. Rothman, I did on a personal note, many of these individuals also helped with the production up at Liberty North for our convocation event last week. Again, personally, I know how much effort that was and that's a huge event with over 1,300, 1,400 people around the building. So just wanted to thank you guys for your efforts on that as well. So with that, that concludes honoring excellence for tonight.
Thank you, Dallas. We will take a break in just a moment so board members can come out and thank you personally and meet all of you. But before we do that, I just wanted to note that coming up is public comment, so any member of the public who's here who wants to address the board, there should be blue cards on the table right outside the door. If you want to fill one out and get that to Dr. Tucker, myself, or another member of the board, we will make sure that you get your chance at the podium when we return at 7:15. All right, well, we are all back. We'll get started at 7:15. All right, 3.03 approval of agenda. Motion.
I move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Discussion on the agenda. Call please.
A.J.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Kim Marie.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Bushy Carey.
Kind of a poor public comment. I do not have any cards to read. Seeing no one, we may try.
Who will make the speech?
It's an agenda I'm about to make. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a simple motion. Documentation concerning these items have been provided to all board members in the public in advance to ensure an extensive thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Motion on consent agenda. I move the board to approve consent agenda items. Second. Call please.
A.J.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Kim Marie.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
In our new format for the second month, we are at a portion of the presentation. Yeah, so we'll carry this through in terms of our adjusted formatting and solicit your feedback as the semester unfolds. So, kick it off with Academic Services and update from Dr. Heidi.
Well, school has started. 19 buildings are up and going and we're super excited about that. Almost 13,000 students have successfully entered our educational realms and we are happy to have them. A couple of updates for you, just to point out some things that are already on our update. Early college is up and going. 20 students are there at MCC campus. It has been a fun learning progression for us and them as they're getting acclimated to what college is and we're getting acclimated to helping them learn what college is. And so that's been a learning piece for both of us, but it's been very, very good and we're excited about that. Also, our two early learning classrooms are going. The 4% funds that you approved last year for early learners, those classrooms are in full swing. And we can't wait for you to be able to come and see our early learners doing their thing in our schools. And then lastly, it's not on the board report, but I just did want to mention that Deb Kaywood was selected as a semifinalist to the state of Missouri in our Teacher of the Year and that's a really big deal. And so we'll know more, I believe, in the next month as they unfold the finalists for Teacher of the Year. So we are very, very proud of all of our teachers and what they do and we're very proud of Deb Kaywood in the work that she does for kids every day. And that's it for Academic Services. Any questions?
Questions of Dr. Heidi or the team?
I just want to acknowledge the transportation for those students. New transportation, that's a great piece of it. There's a lot of equity to it.
Well, that's thanks to you. So thank you for supporting the program and what we're doing. So appreciate your support and approval of that. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Heidi, with the new teacher institute, good three days, right, of instruction, I presume. What type of feedback did you get from the new teachers? Anything surprising?
Actually, I'll let Jenna answer that. I think she could probably speak to it better.
They, what do you want to know? They prefer a little more protein at breakfast.
Is that, okay.
And maybe a diet coke. Was that from you? Did you start that?
Did I send that in?
No, they said it was great. They liked longer sessions. Appreciated it and actually, probably the best comments that we got over and over again from people who had been to other districts in their onboarding processes that they appreciated what we did and how we paid attention to their needs and then were able to diversify for the different types of people. We can do better at that, we know. We will approve on that every year. We get really good feedback from the attendees and so... And we meet with actually our new teachers, year one and year two throughout the year, with a culminating event where actually SLT comes in and talks to everyone and just says, "How was your first year with us?" So I feel like it's a really nice 360 process that we use with our new staff. Thank you for asking.
We spent some time talking about that yesterday in our SLT meeting and keeping in mind there's that right balance to strike with in-service days and professional development, onboarding for new teachers, but then also time in classrooms. So that's seemingly our ongoing conversation, trying to strike that balance. A little precursor, this time next year, might look a little different in and around calendar adjustments as we try to walk through that with Team Liberty over the course of this year. So certain people are surprised as to the statutory changes in our community as it relates to the next school year's calendar.
I had several people tell me, "Thank you for the protective time for teachers in their classroom."
Oh, good.
They were thrilled.
Okay.
And I know several of the principals, I've listened to them say, "And because, you need to have, we're staying with this schedule because you need to be in your classroom." But I also have a question. I see Dr. Adams back there. How are the dogs?
They're awesome. They are awesome. The impact that they're having in our essential skills and our VAS program is phenomenal. We're seeing more interactions, auditory interactions between our students and the Canines. Students that generally do not speak are starting to work, so we're really excited about that. Some of our students that are more prone for self-stimulating when they're anxious or having anxiety, they are seeking our Canines out and using them for self-soothing. And so we're learning the word, they've learned Rose's name. They're very excited about that. We've gotten really positive feedback from our parents, super excited that we're looking for ulterior ways to help deal with the enormous issues of anxiety and depression that we have in our team. So thank you for asking and thank you for district leadership for supporting it. I know it's at the edge of vision, but it's good. It's really good.
How many do you have, April?
We have two that have gone through training and we have one that we will onboard in October and then we're stopping. But we are helping to promote. Our goal is to continue our relationship with Warrior's Best Friend and create a model that other public education systems can take and replicate because we are doing it at no cost. And so this is a model that helps with the financial end of school funding, but also has exponential benefits for this.
I'll be over tomorrow.
Come on over. The gals will like seeing you.
So what's the long-term vision for other schools up in the district and are potentially pushing that to other buildings?
Well, I think it's one thing we monitor, you know, as we think about data-informed, you know, how is it working, what works well, what doesn't work well? And then as we assess that, then thinking about schools that may be interested in it or not. There's some things to work through with dogs and so it's been, it's been an interesting walk for all of us, I think.
And many of you are aware of Wayside Waves and kind of the relationship that we have with them as well, I think primarily at the elementary level.
Yep.
So yeah, we've got a longstanding partnership with them.
You do.
So yeah. Other questions of Academic Services before we move on? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Heidi. Next up is Finance, Ms. Sullivan.
Good evening. I have two donations to recognize tonight. They are both anonymous monetary donations made to Liberty North High School. One to the Theater Department in the amount of $1,000 and one to the Color Guard Winter Guard also in the amount of $1,000. So we thank both of those patrons very much for their generosity. In my report, I wanted to point out that in the financial section that we did post the ASBR for you this month that we submitted earlier in August. And I just wanted to comment on the differences that you have seen in this ASBR over the others in the length. You have much more detail in this ASBR than you have had before. While that's good, it also does challenge the comparability of this one to the previous one. So that's things that we will be working through to monitor and check and provide any help that we can with that. I also wanted you to note that there is something that's missing from this ASBR that has been on previous ones and that is the per pupil calculation. So that is an expanded calculation that Desi is still working on, that they have not completed and it's due to the ESSA mandate reporting to the federal government. So they have not developed it fully yet, so we had to submit without having any idea what that data was going to look like and what it was going to come back to us looking like. But they will work on it. They will get it to us and when we get it, we will report it back out to you the same way we do the regular ASBR. So there will be more to come on that and that's going to be an interesting document, so I'm sure we'll have future conversations about that. But I wanted to point out too that that is not there if you're looking for the per pupil expenditure. So we'll get that when Desi is ready. The other thing I wanted to point out to you is that the Audit and Finance Committee did review data this month and had nothing to report back to you and that their next meeting is on Monday, September the 16th at 5:30 in this room. And that's all I have for you unless you have questions for me.
Questions of Cindy? Thank you, Cindy. Next report then is Human Resources, Dr. Vogelar.
Thank you. We've uploaded a report for you to review. I've got three items I want to pull out from that report and talk about. One is, thank you to Dr. Westfall and the Innovations and Learning Coaches. I think she undersold the new teacher orientation. We've all been a part of new orientations with jobs and typically the glazing over of eyes is pretty common. And the feedback that I received through Dr. Westfall and the team, especially among those veteran teachers that we've hired who've had these experiences in other districts, was that they found ours to be very refreshing. It was not sit and get. It was highly engaging. It was innovative and it was what we call job-embedded professional growth instead of just kind of droning on about compliance and things like that. So I'm very pleased. I think we've got one of the best new teacher innovations institute programs around and it really is a team effort that pulls that off. So thank you to them. We hired 84 certificated employees this year. 83 participated in the NTII. We had one that was a late add. That's a little smaller than usual and that's mostly due to low turnover, which is also something that's very exciting for a school district. It's very typical to see a lot of turnover in public education. We historically and consistently see very little turnover. And so that's certainly a testament to the culture that's created here. The teachers that we have have the kind of relationships with each other and with their building principals to really create a strong partnership around a vision for the school system and it pays off in teachers that want to stay in the life of kids. So I'm very pleased with that, with that reality. Other items that I want to bring out, we've got a Team Liberty meeting coming up. We're going to kick off and launch our year. Work-life balance is going to be a theme for this year as we meet with teams of people to gather data about how we can better do work together. So that's going to be a major theme. I think right at the beginning of the year though, the work is going to be around our insurance renewal. We've got to roll up our sleeves and do that, so the first two meetings are going to be predominantly of that nature. We'll set the dates. Invariably, there are always some tweakings to those dates, so I will push out an update. If any of the dates that are published in this memo get changed or updated, you'll have that. The final thing I want to draw out is we do have an update on the wellness numbers. The numbers here of 84.64% participation in our premium differential initiative has been updated. We got new numbers in today and we're sitting right at 90%. So 97% is where we finished last year. We're 7% off from that and we have a month and a month and a couple of weeks to get those numbers there. So we're very excited about where we're positioned. Historically, we've had a very high percentage of our employees voluntarily participate in this to offset that differential and we're seeing that those numbers are rolling in consistent with that as well. Ms. Fisher, our Wellness Coordinator, really does a yeoman's job of following up with people, making sure that everyone who wants to participate in that has full opportunity to do that. And I think our high numbers are a testament to the work. I think our high numbers are a testament to the work that she does to make that happen. There's other things in the report. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have, but those are the things I wanted to highlight tonight.
Questions for Dr. Vogelhor?
Yes, I noticed sort of the Policy AC grievances, pretty big spike in Q4 last year. Is that generally the case in prior years or is that something?
Well, no, I don't think so. I think we shifted last year where investigations were done by building principals, by directors. We had student services and special ed and HR all investigating complaints and grievances, bullying, harassment, discrimination. Last year was the first year that we had a Director of Compliance where all of that is now centralized and reported to one individual. And then part and parcel with that is the work that he's doing to create visibility for that, really going out and putting a spotlight on the policies that we have that allow people who feel that perhaps something's happening in their life that isn't right, they've got a path now to file a complaint. So these are the numbers of complaints, not substantiated findings. And oftentimes, people, just for lack of vernacular to express whatever's happening in their life, will choose words like "I'm being retaliated against," and that triggers the investigation. But then as you look into it, you realize that it really doesn't fall under a Policy AC violation, but it gets investigated and reported nonetheless. So that's probably where you see that. This is a baseline year where we're centralizing all of these claims, so it's hard to compare how this is for other years. But we'll start to see trend over time as we've made this shift, this commitment to a Director of Compliance.
On that note, in terms of the analytics and looking at comparisons within peer districts, as we've asked that same question as to what do your numbers look like, we're having a difficult time finding districts that are tracking that. So I think as we do that internally, we'll start seeing what our trends are from year to year. I was a little surprised by that as Dr. Vogelhor and I were talking, as the districts aren't necessarily trapping that data or that information. Other questions for Human Resource?
Yeah, I think everyone, not to be blunt, speaks in here. But as I look at the enrollment, and this is probably for Mr. Anderson as well, but I know numbers move and shape, but it seems like Shoal Creek is really getting up there in its total enrollment, what, 919? What's kind of the plan as we move forward for assessing what we can add in?
Great question.
I'll jump into it, then certainly Bob can add to it. So we clearly are keeping a close eye on Shoal Creek. That's the building probably that's greatest stress. The capacity of that building right now, they're pretty much at capacity based on the analysis that we've done in recent years with Hollis and Miller and then Business Information Services, which did our enrollment projection analysis a couple of years ago. So they're right at that threshold. Kind of a layer deeper than that, though, there are sufficient classrooms for all the classes that they're conducting. And so we feel pretty good about their safety and functionality of the space. We are looking very closely at next year. If you're familiar with the building, they have a mezzanine kind of loft area, and we're looking to bring an elevator up there and do some work up there to allow for some more flexibility of space, probably more so in the specials to kind of lift up there, which will help them out a little bit. And then we're also, right now, undergoing some work within the main office building to create some more relief for some of their smaller needs for sped coordinators and so forth. Probably the most significant thing is we are right now kind of dusting off the RFP that we did a few years ago and getting ready to put that back out on the street. It's been three years, so it's time to kind of look at the numbers again and reassess, which then that bleeds right into the facility master planning process. So that will come on the heels of that. It will give us an opportunity to talk that through and what that means. The last point is one thing that we're tracking very closely across the system is enrollment as we're tracking against projections. So our overall kindergarten enrollment is pretty close to what was projected with the most recent demographic report. And that's showing a little bit of a dip. Now, that's across the system, that's not within each building. So at Shoal Creek, you're seeing pretty much that, you know, they're nearing what they had at first grade and second grade. And so they're not seeing the relief that maybe we thought they might see based on that overall projection. So we have some work to do there. We're obviously aware of it. Kristi Bowman's very connected and making sure she's keeping us apprised. But if we need to look next year, we always get a trailer option to kind of cover a gap. But a lot of that depends if they have a similar class size, that's that which is leaving, it's really not an issue. And then you had sent me an email earlier in the day, and you all mainly called us from back a few years ago and talked about building sizes and ideal sizes. The decisions that were made for Shoal Creek to add back in 2013 really kind of cemented that in as a large school, 900 student school. That's what it's built for right now, even though that may not be the ideal going forward with new construction. So that's kind of the reality of it, and we just have to keep a really close eye on what's going on there.
Well, and I think too with the capacity, the classroom space that exists for the additional sections, and so from a staffing standpoint, we filled those with teachers to ensure that the individual classroom ratios are very on par. You know, as an example, Shoal Creek's kindergarten average is 22 in a room. DESI's MCIP standards are 25 for that. 30 is the standard for fifth grade, and I think theirs is 27 on average. And so the classroom space is utilized to ensure that the individual classroom experience is very on par. And you do that until you run out of space. Obviously, a day, you know, comes when you have to reconfigure, redraw boundaries, and there's always that tug-of-war balance between disrupting neighborhoods and/or not disrupting neighborhoods, adding on and adding sections, so.
Other questions for HR? I will point out, and this was in your report as well, Dr. Vogelhor, interestingly, this spring we will be graduating the last sub 1,000 student class as far as our seniors because next year's juniors are right at that 1,000 mark, I believe.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
All the way down to, I believe, sixth graders.
Yep.
And then it kind of tapers back a little bit. So we're hitting that 1,000 mark as we watch that bubble matriculate up into their seniors.
Yeah. My oldest son was in that first 1,000 student class, and I remember thinking, wow. Back then it was all, you know, 800s, 700s, 800s, and then you had this 1,000, and then it just continued, 1,000, 1,000, 1,000, yeah.
We'll spend a significant amount of time looking at the demographic study and projections as we re-rack that, but then also looking at anything as far as the facility process. So more to come on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Vogelhor. Next, Operations, Mr. Anderson?
Sure, let it up in addition to the normal monthly report and construction, we have the various program evaluations. So certainly if you have questions, I'll turn to that. And then I guess I just wanted to, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the group that was in here earlier. And I think for most of the board that was on that tour that Thursday before the opening week, you all saw it and you all were concerned, and rightly so. I mean, it was going to break down to the wire. But in addition to all the good and great work that the team did, and they came together and just, you know, what do you need? And, you know, we'll just work until we need to kind of get it wrapped up. I really wanted to call out Steve Aldridge. And really, you know, leadership matters. And Steve kind of organized, orchestrated that whole thing and pulled it off. I think he doubted himself at times as well, but I didn't. And it showed, and it kind of played out, I think, as we all hoped. One other, just any dull note is as we were trying to get inspections the night before to make sure we could actually occupy the buildings, and trying to get the building inspections department to come to Franklin, they said, "We were just there three days ago. We're not wasting our time to come back out and look." And I said, "You gotta trust me, just please come out to Franklin. We need to open it up tomorrow, but it doesn't look like it did three days ago." And sure enough, they were pretty shocked when they got there to see all the good work that had been completed. And I guess, I'll just kind of run through just a quick kind of construction update. All the work that's going on, some of the work that's finishing up. Liberty North, everything is kind of on schedule, on budget, per plan, and that base it will open up just prior to first semester or second semester this year. So that's January of '20. Liberty High School, that work will bleed into the summer of '20, but they'll be ready for fall for the performing arts center at that location. All the work at Franklin, the next week's going to be really busy as they kind of wrap up work in the wing to open that up for the fifth grade classes and in the kitchen area. They've been kind of doing a temporary makeshift for the cafeteria work. And so that will be ready here soon. And then the gym, as you saw, was kind of offline. That work will really continue, and that should be open right after Labor Day. So that's still tracking to where it needed to be. Manor Hill, Schumacher, early childhood, those are all wrapping up this week. And we're pretty confident by Monday of next week that workers will be out and those spaces will be fully completed and occupied. This work in the DAC, I think you can follow, we're going to work on that atrium area where we used to sit. That work will begin here right after Labor Day and continue through kind of late October. Shoal Creek and Liberty Middle School, both of those projects, those are just now really kind of picking up steam. That work will take place and start wrapping up in early September. They'll start to occupy, so that's not that far off as well. And then last, especially Dr. Adams behind me, Shoal Creek. The lost gym and the rest in space project, that is progressing really well. We anticipate the rest in space will be done by the end of September and then kind of early to mid-October for the auxiliary gym. One last point I'd like to make, this came up on the tour with various construction projects. We have hired two new security officers as part of our program, safety and security program. They are armed officers. LPS employees, they're both retired police officers, one at Liberty High, one at Liberty North. And they're really going to be starting kind of around that lunchtime hour and take their work into the evening when those buildings stay reactive. So you'll see that presence at the high schools kind of through midday into early evening. The other real value is those positions also will have the flexibility if they need to swing over to 10, you know, at a middle school or if there's conferences going on, they'll have flexibility to kind of move about pretty freely. So you'll see that, that's a change that we've not had in the past. I just wanted to bring your attention to that.
Questions for Steve?
How's transportation going with the first week and all the construction?
Yeah, it's going really well. It's been nice that we've been able to be prepared for some of, you know, what's out there. The bridge, looks like that's going to be live here, you know, by the end of the month at least last year. So that's good news. That will just loosen up a lot of kind of the stress points that they have. Maybe where that conister is going to close for a two-week period right after Labor Day, that's complicating for us because that's a major kind of connection point to Epic, to Liberty High, to South Valley, to Discovery. But Jeff and his team have kind of programmed in and around that. And then while I'm on that, one last is 104th Street, just that you're aware, that's been closed down. They're getting ready here, I think, next week or the week after where they're going to flip that. So that west side, that west side has been shut down for quite some time, up to like Mandalay or Willow Road. And then what's going to happen now is they're going to flip that and they're going to shut down that section from A Highway or Church or near Liberty North to Willow or Mandalay and kind of really crank on that over the next two months, I think. And then later.
104th is still shut down then?
It's still shut down. But now you'll be able to get from 291, you'll be able to get into that area, whereas now you can't.
Yeah, I just cut through, so.
So Conister is going to be closed from 152 South to...
Always.
We requested that they leave us alone at those peak of times, but it'll come.
Not going to happen. Again, Transportation Department is to be commended for, these first couple of weeks are typically, you have to kind of work things out and iron things out, throw in the destruction of a bridge. That kind of throws things for a curve. So appreciate their flexibility, that they've really stepped up in that respect.
I do have just one question about the nutrition services evaluation. There's a lot of really good stuff here about compliance and nutrition density and social media and costs. Do we ever ask how it tastes?
That was my question.
Is it good?
I've got it up right here.
Yes, they do survey and they do, they work really hard at that. I think we have to, it's hard to appreciate all the challenges they have in kind of meeting federal statutes in terms of what they can serve and what percentages of, you know, fill the blank. So it's a job they work really hard at, I know that, and they study it. But my kids, that's the thing they're giving the hardest time about was, you know, why can't they make chicken like so-and-so makes chicken? Why can't they soak it in the meat? That agrees with their genetics, you know, that's why. So, yeah, they do connect with students through survey instruments, and then I think they just keep trying to find ways to...
There are some bullets at the end that talk about what we're doing well, what we need to maybe do a little better. But it's still talk about, you know, local sourcing versus...
And I do appreciate all that. I don't want, appreciate that it's difficult. I was just curious.
Yeah, food quality are great. I'd like to see that.
It's that healthy stuff. I want the deep fat fried, quite frankly.
Other questions for Operations? Anything else before we move on?
Not really.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
You're healthy now.
Moving then on to the Superintendent's Report, a couple of things to elevate. And again, as Dr. Heidi mentioned, it has been a good start to the school year. We appreciate everyone and all that they do in terms of getting things going as August reconvenes and students are back in session. So it's an exciting time. Couple of things over the course of the last few weeks since we last met. At the state board level, the Commissioners' Education Policy Committee unveiled a series of recommendations that I think we've been keeping you apprised of. We've participated in that committee, and the culminating recommendations included a couple of key areas. Work in and around expanding early childhood access and opportunities, teacher preparation, recruitment, retention. Another area was in terms of support of workforce development and partnerships, flexible structures and programming, data systems and accountability systems. Were six areas that the committee focused in on in terms of the future of education in the state of Missouri. And so with those recommendations, at the state board meeting, it was communicated that those recommendations will likely inform one of three things, if not all three of these areas. State Department initiatives are areas of focus, perhaps the governor's education agenda moving forward, but then also legislative policy or agendas or proposals as we look to the spring legislative session. I was asked the question by another peer in and around, you know, have we put a price tag to all of this? And can we do all of this? Will all of this, you know, cost X amount of dollars? And how do we afford it? I think the reality of it is, is that next step is for the State Board of Education to look at these recommendations, peel out three to five areas that they really want to focus in on that belong to the state board, that then they can begin strategizing and putting the detail around. So we'll continue to engage in that and keep you informed as to that progress. On a related note, we're currently in a window for feedback to be provided to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in and around MCIP 6, that next iteration of what our accountability and assessment structure looks like. That window for input lasts through the end of this month through August 31st. And so there's a key kind of communication on DESI's website as to how to provide feedback in and around MCIP 6. The next thing we want to mention that was mentioned at the state board level was in and around the changes tied to the annual performance report. As that is made public and districts are made aware of their annual performance, that's going to look and feel a little bit different. Whereas in years past, they would, based on the points assigned, about 140 points, they'd give you a percentage as to what you scored. You'd score in that, you know, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98 range. That's been our history over the last several years. And then districts would quickly compare themselves and stack each other up. We're really trying to move away from that as a state and make it more focused on districts' growth in and around performance areas identified within the annual performance report, of which we know is your MAP performance, your end of course exam, ACT, graduation rate attendance. As we think about MCIP 6, some of those standards and measures will change to incorporate workforce development pieces like college and career readiness. So we'll look forward to that transition. But this next iteration of our APR will look and feel a little different. As we look at our own internal scorecard, someone will likely still want to make some comparisons, so someone's bound to do that. But it's really an opportunity for us to message and communicate the changes to our faculty, staff and community. A couple of other items that was mentioned under the Academic Services Report, the early college program getting off and running with 20 students. We're excited about that. We also have some changes with some of our external programming. Northland Caps, as you're aware, has a new executive director who's hit the ground running, our very own Brett Kisker. our very own Brett Kisker, moved into that role earlier this summer, so we're excited to see him there. Currently, we have right at about 100 students participating in Northland Caps. A companion program is KC Tech Academy. We started that last year in a pilot process with a whopping four students, and now we've grown that to 15 students and look to continue to grow that in partnership with Magna LMV and Carney Public Schools.
That's 15 of our own?
It's a combination, a combination between us and Carney. And it's also a combination of students that are returning for year two from last year to this next year, or this current year, and then also some that are new for their year one.
Yep.
They do have a new executive director by the name of Kim Palomares, who's fresh on the job, she just got hired last week. Her background was that she owned her business, Hire For You was the name of it, focused on talent development. Prior to that, spent a significant amount of time with Prostaff as a senior business development manager. So she's learning the ropes there as well and excited about having her in this role. She'd worked pretty closely with Northland School Districts, also with Chamber Economic Development, Northland Caps, so she has that education partnership experience that I think will be of benefit within KC Tech Academy. The last thing I wanted to mention is the upcoming MSBA conference at the end of September, around the 27th and 28th. We do have a couple of presentations, sessions. One is entitled Creating a Culture of Innovation, and then the second one is Leveraging Your Learning Network. So we will be recruiting those of you that'll be attending the MSBA conference to assist in presenting on those two topics. So we'll be gathering some time for us to get together and work through those presentations. Last thing that I wanted to mention around the MSBA conference, which is new to us this year, last couple of years they've done student showcase where they've highlighted student groups from districts, and we're currently working on, I believe, three student groups to travel with us to the conference and showcase their learning and their work within our school system. So we look forward to telling their story as well. With that said, would certainly open it up to any questions that you all have of me.
I love the graduate profile, and I think I've mentioned this before, I really like that in our strategic planning, we're leading with the, kind of beginning with the end in mind, go back to a seven habits thing, but we're leading with the product as opposed to all the things we're trying to do to the product. Are we going to have more and more, I know you've started to drill down into what each of these sections mean, are we going to, how far does that go? I guess, how far does a drill down go? Are we going to end up with individuals actually having these little profiles that they can walk into the world with when they graduate? Or is this kind of where that...
That's a great question, and I think if that's the end result, as students walk across the line to graduate, right, we want to be able to say that they have those skills and dispositions, that those are our areas of focus. The other piece we talked about at convocation would be, you not only have your diploma in hand, but you have that plus-one experience. I think where you see the dispositions and skills kind of play out is not only in your traditional content areas, and I would say pre-K through grades 12, but I would also say a lot of it comes in experiential learning and real-world learning. And so we will have to build to that final profile in terms of identifying within our district across content areas and grade levels. Here's where collaboration or communication or citizenship or growth mindset or perseverance, here's where there's those, those pieces show up, and here's what that looks like. The other piece to that that is relatively different than kind of those traditional metrics is that social emotional learning piece, in terms of realization of well-being, your strengths, you know, areas of focus and so forth. We do have some tools in place like Panorama that address some of those by identifying where kids are at. The more important piece is starting from where they're at and growing them in that social emotional development. So that's something that we'll want to spend some time on as well in terms of working toward that graduate profile. That's what we want to aspire to. So it's very aspirational, but then there's a logistics piece of how that happens and occurs.
Right, because what I'm thinking is, when kids are walking across the stage, they've got their diploma, and those have been handed out since the beginning of time. But they're also going to have this extra piece.
Right.
And I don't know that it's a resume, but it's almost like a resume to where, here's where I was as part of the Liberty community, as part of Liberty Schools process, here's where I was exposed to entrepreneurial skills.
Sure.
Here's where I, you know, had an opportunity to learn about diversity, not only in my community, but worldwide.
And you mentioned, you mentioned a resume builder, where it is in part a resume builder, but it's also a portfolio, but then it also has implications for us as we completely rethink transcripts. We know what lands on a traditional transcript, but then how do you connect, you know, a student's ability to communicate, collaborate and persevere, or be a good listener, or whatever those attributes look like? We've got to rethink that transcript, and there are some good models that we can look at, but then that's part of this journey.
You said logistics earlier, and I'm just trying to adjust my expectations of where are we headed with this, because I really like where we're going, I just want to go a little further down the road.
That goes back to that kind of uncommon metric, that I think, I'm stealing David's term, he and I talked about that a couple of years ago, and are we measuring the right things? So that's part of that, putting that scorecard together and building it, knowing that there are some pieces we've got, we've done traditional assessment and those metrics before, we've got that piece figured out. How do we quantify or calibrate social emotional learning and real-world learning opportunities? That's a little different. So we'll figure that out and keep you apprised as we, as we journey through that. Great questions.
Over time, whether it's straight to employer or there's another step of education, you want to be able to see what the, ready for and be able to build. You need a resume-type document to get that taken advantage.
And I think too, I think, this probably isn't the number one reason for it, but as a father of kids that are, I got one, I just was asking how day two went of college, because she just had her secondary classes today. It's almost like they don't realize how much they've been experiencing, they don't realize how much they have to offer, and they have to see that. And sometimes helping them see that gives them a lot of confidence that helps propel them into the next thing.
Yeah.
So that's, it's not just educating the world that our kids are coming out of here with some good things, it's also letting them know that.
Finding where that stuff is in the traditional environment too, where I had experience with those ideas and those skills and I've demonstrated.
Right.
I think an integral piece to that too is the navigators that you all approved earlier last spring. I don't know how many hours, I'm looking at Colleen, I don't know how many hours she has spent already working with that new team of three, in terms of their roles and responsibilities, and how you can take this to scale and truly linking a kid with a passion pursuit or what's next, let alone tracking them post-graduation to see how we are doing on our end and preparing them for whatever pursuit they look to. That's exciting, but again, I'll point back to our book study that we're almost done with, we'll pick up with that in September, and that it's that you don't do this work in isolation, you do it through partnerships and through networking. So we are fortunate to fast-forward end of September to be partnering with Getting Smart and the Kaufman Foundation, Tom Vander Ark, him being in district or his team being in district, to help kind of explore some of these possibilities and answer some of these questions as well as solicit resources that they have available to us to pursue the transcripting or, you know, the navigation piece in terms of college and career pursuits.
So I could go back to KC Tech Academy.
You're good.
We had four last year that participated.
Yes.
Did all four stay with it for the second year?
Colleen or Julie, do you all have the specifics there?
We graduated and stayed through to...
Gotcha. Okay, perfect.
And we had several of our original class have internships over the course of the summer. One individual who we know well was a fairly quiet young man who now is not so quiet. We had him share his story at the Education Foundation Breakfast, Devante, you might remember Devante, but he has, he has excelled within that program, so, yeah, it's pretty exciting. Other questions? That concludes our administration reports.
101, under unfinished business, district strategic...
Pick up with Scott's question, and I think it fits here. We do want to present to you this evening kind of where we're at with our district strategic planning process. We did, as you all recall, hold a special session in August to spend a little bit more time together, looking at a couple of key pieces that we've again uploaded this evening. As Scott mentioned, the graduate profile, both the public-facing piece as well as...
By the way, I skipped ahead.
That was a good bridge.
It was.
The public-facing graduate profile, but then the more descriptive piece that can give you a little bit more detail as to the rationale behind it, where we're currently at with our draft strategic plan as well as plans one through 22. Even since August 12th, several of you have provided us with feedback that we are already diving in and making revisions. So we wanted to plant that seed this evening for you to take a look at as a first read, knowing that at our study session on September 3rd, we're going to dive deeper into it and share with you the updates that we have. And then finally, the intent being if we're able to stay on track with our timeline, bring that back to the board for consideration and final approval in the month of September at our regular monthly meeting. The companion piece to that would be the narrative that really takes our vision statements and crafts a story to be told that we can share with our students, our faculty, staff, our community, and really wanting to have a catchy, for lack of a better word, appealing narrative that gets people excited about this work, but then also kind of captures what we aspire to, and really trying to trap those vision statements as to an ideal state in what we're trying to work toward. So we're excited about that and look forward to providing you additional updates. If you have suggestions, revisions, recommendations, by all means, please push that to us. Our strategic leadership team meetings are now dedicated to that in terms of the rewriting and the trimming and the revisions. I told our team yesterday that it's a lot like writing a thesis or a dissertation, you rewrite, you rewrite, you trim, you trim, you trim. So we'll be doing that over the course of the next several weeks, so we'll just provide that to you this evening as an update.
When is the official strategic plan to be submitted for compliance?
That's a good question, and it's really part of the items not waived checklist with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So if you attain a certain degree of accountability and performance, you do have those items not waived checklist.
Okay.
And so there's really no set time per se as far as a due date, other than the presence of a strategic plan.
Gotcha.
That's really the accountability piece to it. Good question. Okay?
New business, 101, board policy revisions, we've got some for review and some for...
We have several items under here. The first policies to be approved this evening that we're recommending are GB, GBAC, GBEBC, and GBPB. A lot of initials there. Those are items that you have seen previously that we would bring forward this evening for your consideration. An item that we are bringing forward for approval on first read stems from a conversation we had at our August study session in and around clarifying language within JG-R1 student discipline, and that specifically around the topic of harassment, and that that historically within JG-R1 has been kind of a catch-all category. And we've had some traditional language that aligns to federal definitions of protected classes. And what we've noticed with conversations with families over the summer and even in the spring is really the need to clarify a couple of things, particularly on the basis of race, ethnicity, nationality, religion, and how we can craft a better definition or paragraph in kind of conveying that. But then secondly, another area that we deal with in schools is in and around sexual harassment. So what we did is we spent some time last week, as well as today even, working with Missouri School Boards Association Academic Services in wanting to have a clearer explanation of harassment. So what you end up seeing this evening are three paragraphs, one of which is related to race, ethnicity, another one that is related to sexual harassment, and then the third one, which is kind of an other category, addresses other protected classes. The other piece that I would mention to that mirrors what we typically see in JGR1, and that is kind of the ensuing consequences, knowing that there is a range of consequences, anywhere from apparent conference all the way to 180 days of suspension. And so we would put that forward for you this evening for your consideration with a couple of pieces, one of which is that there are other policies that have implications in and around JGR, particularly policy AC and JFCF as it relates to bullying. There may be further study that's needed as it relates to other policies as we work through the course of this year, and particularly next spring and gearing up for the following year that we might want to spend some time looking at. The other thing that I would say is that JG-R is also the policy that our building principals pull from to be included in our student handbooks. That's student-facing, but then also parent, made available to parents, so that they have a better understanding of guidelines, infractions, consequences and so forth. So we wanted to share that with you this evening. We have spent some time with Missouri School Boards Association, really revising the language, have been given the green light based on the recommendations that they gave us earlier this afternoon. The remaining items, policies to be reviewed that we'll see again in September are AC and EF, and then just some procedures for your awareness, DJFAAP, EFAP and KBAP are provided for you in board docs. Okay?
I appreciate it, hopefully put that together. Just here, last week.
Last week.
Fast turnaround.
We had been looking at it over the course of the summer, and so we had been, we pulled a couple of examples of districts across the state that have a little bit more explicit language within JG-R. Of course, as soon as you start doing that, other questions arise, so there will likely be other questions or changes that we'll look to bring forward over the course of this year.
Right. And as you, you already mentioned that it might need further study in relation to other policies and also in relation to our strategic plan as we continue to...
Absolutely.
...progress and are looking at more restorative practices and equity and we're going to have to revisit, so I'm good with today?
Right.
With the understanding that...
More to come.
There's more to come.
And part of that strategic plan work, as we've talked about, would be equity and access, but then also reflection as it relates to our policies and procedures. And as you all know, particularly those of that have been on the board for some time before access digitally, the binder itself on board policies is incredibly thick. And so to think about combing through that through an equity lens is a daunting task, but a critically important task. So that's the level of conversation we're talking about in respect to truly combing through every single one of our policies through an equity lens, and certainly partnering with MSBA to do that work as well as other districts, so that's a big lift.
I read it on a plane once.
Oh my goodness. That would have been a long flight.
That's a long flight years ago. So this JGR, I agree, we need to clarify some things here, but all we've done here is just said what we mean by harassment is some of these things.
Exactly.
None of them are worse or better than others, we're not adding days to the first offense or subsequent offense, it's really just clarifying what harassment means.
What constitutes those categories rather than just a general catch-all paragraph that we had under the existing JG-R?
Okay.
The other thing that I would point, as we've had conversations this week and last, is really at the building level, the discernment that principals have, principals and assistants, in assessing infractions and consequences, having those conversations with young people, but then also taking testimonies as things arise and trying to get to the bottom of something, you know, what are those issues that warrant law enforcement being involved or juvenile office being involved or referral of sorts? And the value of being able to lean on a district-wide student services director for those items that probably a principal needs some guidance with, then being able to pick up the phone outside of Dr. Moore, Dr. Dixon Sehorn, Dr. Heidi, to be able to talk through with the student services director and Rebecca Bressman as to, okay, here's what I'm thinking about, help me, is that on track with what other buildings are doing? So being able to triangulate, so to speak, what's going on at the building level with policy, but then also that continuity across the system.
Is there a process in place either through Rebecca or others to kind of monitor how discipline is handed out to ensure that it is somewhat consistent?
Good question. Power School is, serves as our platforms for inputting that information, you know, and it's really those items that are 10 days or less, there will be ranges. Truancy, that is pretty cut and dry in terms of you skip school, here's first offense, here's second offense, third offense. We do have some structures that we utilize administratively to be able to guide principals as to what that could be with the understanding that you're, you're not so clear, infractions may, they may vary depending upon that individual circumstance. In terms of those larger infractions, once you get into that, you know, long-term suspension or... or 10 days plus, we're really able to monitor that from the district level through student services and that continuity, then also being able to look back into power school, whether it's this year's incidence or going back to last year. And that's a common, common conversation that administrators have in terms of we have this situation, all right, well, what did we do last time or the time before to try to maintain that degree of continuity?
Okay.
Albeit each situation is a little bit different or has a different twist or circumstance.
Okay. And it does rely, though, on input being put into power school, right, for the incident?
Yes. One of the challenges that we have that we're getting ready to poke into, you would think that within JG-r, all of those categories of consequences that you have fit seamlessly with power school.
Sure.
And so what we're trying to reconcile is in part what we've identified within policy as to the actual entries within power school to make sure that there's more of a merger, seamless application as compared to maybe some definitions or terms that are a little bit off.
Okay.
And so we're going to be poking into that with power school to try to align that a little bit better than what we've done in years past. What's, what's reported, the other thing I would say to that, Nick, would be what's reported to DESI is uniform...
Sure.
As it relates to districts across the state. And then once you start getting into like your Safe Schools Act violations, that's at a whole 'nother level.
Okay.
That comes with more law enforcement implications, and we deal with that unfortunately from time to time.
Sure.
Yeah. Dr. Heidi, you want to add?
I just wanted to add, Rebecca Bressman, each month, having personally been in that position, but she's been with it each month and disseminating, combing through the letters to parents and dividing, to see if there's any outstanding things that are possible and also that this is going to be a portion of what the board exists to do to people and to students. It's been...
And we should see that report we provided to the board back in June.
Mm-hmm.
We should be able to keep that current and updated now moving forward.
Okay.
That's our intent with that disproportionality piece. Great questions.
I think it's really important that we move forward on this, you know, with some clarity.
Sure.
So much of our time in the district was spent on items like this, that if we, there's some clarity for parents and youth, that we can start to make some progress.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ready for motion?
Ready for motion?
Oh, the other thing I see is characteristic protected by law, so I'm assuming that we're using either US or Missouri...
Both.
Link's, okay.
Yeah. So there are some, there are some states that expand the federal definition.
Mm-hmm.
And so in looking back at that in terms of Missouri, where we're at presently, Missouri is aligned to the federal definition of protected classes. And so we'll continue to monitor that and watch that. Part of that is predicated on the political pendulum as it relates to the federal level as to whether or not some of those definitions change. But then at the same time, states are already diving into revising what they constitute as a protected class. Most notably, it's in and around sexual identity, in terms of gender identity and how people are identifying. So right now, we're kind of in that awkward spot, for lack of a better word, as it relates to our state definition and our federal definition. So if you talk with legal counsel, Missouri School Boards Association, they tend to hedge toward what the federal statute says or what the state statute says. Thus, that's the language that you see within the revision we're talking about this evening. Good question.
Do you see power school moving us away from, there was one category in this district report that just was humongous and blue, I think it was behavior issues.
Yeah, that was kind of a catch-all.
Okay.
I think what you'll end up seeing within power school, our hope is it more closely mirrors the categories we've identified within JG-r.
So ideally, that, that large category will shrink.
But then that also creates a little bit of an issue as we look to last year in June, that data report we pulled forward and comparing it to, let's say, next June, if some of those categories are different. So we'll just need to, we'll need to message what those differences are in terms of what those categories and changes look like. Yeah, Dr. Heidi?
And a piece of that, too, we're also looking into a management system to help us in the language and communication to see if we're able to...
That would, that would be in addition to our power school system, specifically for navigating the disproportionality piece.
Has there been any opportunity, since this will go to the handbook, to get any reaction? Is there clarity about this from students, especially high schoolers?
Want to speak to that, Dr. Moore, Dr. Dixon-Sehorn, or Dr. Heidi?
Actually, we were just talking about that. So do you want to speak to that?
From a high schooler pers, if this is what winds up in the handbook, is this going to outline what is acceptable and what...
Yeah, absolutely. So they presented in advisory through women and other programs, so we were just thinking about that. This is approved and what is the next step to ensure that our students are...
And the other piece prior to this evening I would add is engaging principals on the language. So principals have been exposed to it.
Now, they've gone through the handbook already, but we've told them that this would most likely be coming and that it would be adapted, and students sign off to say that I've read the handbook and I understand everything that we've gone through. So this will just be a piece that they'll have to follow up with, but it'll be easy to do that through the advisory courses. The only split that doesn't cover right now is norm, and so we work with them. They'll have it next year, so it'll make it easier.
And people have expressed concern that this was not very clear, any sense of whether this...
I have not heard back from them, but have reached out and given an opportunity to engage. Has not happened. We'll follow up with that, but let them know the...
I write something incredibly clear that my wife reads, which is...
Absolutely.
Number four two thousand...
Okay, I just have one more question. Sorry.
Second. Second. You have more special?
Now you can talk all you want.
Sorry. So a question about under technology misconduct on cell phones. Do you really say that ninth graders can't use their cell phones on school grounds?
I would say.
Are we talking about within JG-r, not within these...
Right, yeah. Yes.
Do you all hear that piece?
Could you say that one more time? I'm sorry.
I think there's a distinction between the grades and how the technology piece applies to our grade configuration.
Right. So technology misconduct, cell phones, communications devices, grades pre-K through nine, these devices are not to be used on school.
I think that's a carryover from...
Okay.
There are also electronic devices, which has a break at seven.
Right. Okay, so further study needed.
I can help to fix that.
Yep.
Further discussion on that?
Technology misconduct.
Technology, okay.
AJ?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Machine carries.
We do have a couple items for your consideration this evening and wanted to turn it over to Mr. Anderson to provide an update on these two pieces.
Sure. The first item was actually an emergency or expedited rental for, to bring a tent in at Franklin since Jim, he is out of doors, who put a tent over the tennis court to shade students who were out there for PE. So we had to expedite that and went ahead and did that. The second one is typically this would go through a two-reed process. This is academic services contracted, JSTOR. The desire to kind of get this in place sooner rather than later, they request that, they request that this is put on for first read, consideration under first read rather than going through the normal two-reed process. And so pretty straightforward, both of them are pretty straightforward. Happy to take any questions.
Questions on either of those items from exchange?
Mine's sixty-five or... I would approve a two-ten rental and sales.
Second.
We appreciate that it's called out for business rather than...
AJ?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Machine carries.
Last item on the business, doesn't that lead to the tax rate? That are, as we, you're in already.
That's the actionable piece, the follow-up to the tax rate hearing. Does it need anything to walk through in terms of highlights?
Absolutely. So the recommended levy tonight is based upon the last certified assessed valuation that we received from the county clerk, and it has been reviewed by the state auditor's office. The 2019 assessed valuation represents a net increase of 11.824% compared to the assessed valuation of August 2018. The total assessed valuation for the Liberty Public School District on which current taxes are collected is $1,697,787,61. New construction included in the assessed valuation is approximately $36.3 million, which is a 17.4% decrease from prior year new construction. And as you know, local tax revenue represents about 36% of our overall budget. The 2019 authorized operational tax levy ceiling is $4.88.85 as approved by the state auditor. This reflects a decrease of $28.98 from the prior year. The 2019 debt service levy has been set by the state auditor at $1.64.74. It's recommended and budgeted that the Board of Education voluntarily reduce this piece of the levy to $1.56.65. It's recommended that you approve the tax levies in the following funds, operating at $4.52.85, debt service at $1.56.65, and .36 in the capital projects fund. The total results of all of those funds combined are $6.45, which is the same total tax rate as 2018, so no change in the overall total of our tax levy. Upon approval, this tax rate will be submitted to the county clerk and the state.
Questions?
Okay, I'm going to do it again. I moved the board set the 2019, 2020 tax rate at $6.45.
Second.
Special motion?
I make a, make a comment. We've talked several instances about facilities master planning, demographic study. A companion piece to this is our bonded indebtedness, looking at Scott and David in particular from a few years ago, and we spent quite a bit of time with Greg Bricker and then reported back to the board in and around how we were kind of setting ourselves up for no tax rate increases and so forth. We will want to do that again with George K. Baum, who by the way, has been procured by Stiefel Nicholas, but that's another piece. But sit down and kind of reset, refresh our amortization schedules, our assessed valuation, our tax rate, all of those pieces to inform that facilities master planning process as we conduct the new demographics study. So we just kind of insert that here as it relates to this fall's work that we'll bring forward to this...
That actually sounds like Baum.
It kind of is, yeah. If you're into numbers and spreadsheets.
They do. I would really like to do...
Rule call, please.
AJ?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Machine carries.
That is our new business. We're on two week one oh one. There are lists of upcoming meetings. Keep in mind, next month is the MSB all conference. Some presence at that for the presentations that we're doing. I mentioned that earlier. When do we need to let you know about attendance and registration?
Register, everyone is registered. Give the registration in June. Rooms are secured, so just need to confirm that those dates are appropriate for anyone. So I will give each of you, I'll send each of you a reservation information, confirmation, and let me know if we need to make adjustments to such.
Any more remarks?
I saw that Lynn said, I mean, character traits list. She is such an efficient person. So Dallas, you would pass that along to Ms. Lynn Martin.
I'll say, everybody who gets school year started, I mean, I don't know if any of you all feel it, but I felt the pressure of day one, just writing, waiting for the emails to come through, and the fact that they're word on you is great. So I know, you know, we recognize the custodial staff and maintenance and facilities and all that tonight, but I know there's a whole lot of other people get into it, and it just went smoothly, so thank you.
I think it's kind of good what I was talking about, but the fact we recognize the custodial staff in that, in that form, I think it says a powerful thing about us, too. Appreciate it, man.
The board adjourned.
Second. AJ?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie? Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Machine carries.
[inaudible]